All right, you guys look like you're good to go.
All right, well, it is May 25th, 2022. And it is 5:31, we're going to go ahead and get started. We have myself, First Select Woman Tara Carr, Selectman Steve Dunn present this evening, as well as a plethora of others from across Town Hall and the town of Brookfield. We could just go ahead, please, and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, can I make a point of order?
Sure.
I believe that this meeting is illegal. And the reason I say that is the Board of Selectmen two months ago voted to have all meetings of the Board of Selectmen in person. Since you have not rescinded that at a meeting in person, it still is in effect. And therefore, you cannot have a Zoom meeting because you voted to have every meeting in public, in person.
Okay, well, that's too bad. Dennis, could you please chime in?
Yeah, sure. How's everybody doing today? So my understanding is that the Health Director has made this decision, correct? My understanding that the Health Director has determined that all meetings should be be done remotely?
Yes.
Okay, then then we'll be following, we're following the decision of the Health Director. We can move forward. Thank you.
Is that in writing? I never got that. I never saw anything about that.
It's posted to the town website. To be honest, I email you all the time. I don't hear anything back and I don't have the bandwidth to continue to email everybody about everything.
I'm just trying to follow the rules.
So am I, Steve.
Yeah, so again, again, we're following the direction from the Health Director. That's what we're doing.
Moving on to our first item of the evening, according to the agenda, is the whisk in your middle school walls. So this was brought up again Tuesday night at the Board of Finance meeting, and it's something that we've been waiting to get after until the budget was approved. And we are at the junction now where the Board of Selectmen should go ahead and make a decision as to where the fun, the additional funding will come from, because the pricing has moved many times over the course of the last year and a half. It has been that long, so it's time to get to work and get this thing repaired. The $700,000 line item in the budget is a go. And from my understanding, from the Municipal Billing Committee, we need an additional $96,000. Initially, during the interim of the of the course of working the budget, we were told that the prices came in at over a million dollars, and that is true. We went out to bid and got three quotes, and they were all over a million. The lowest bidder of those came in right at about a million, and that pricing has changed now due to a material revision. They've altered the material from steel to a product called Statharum, made by manufactured by BMW, from what I understand. If anybody wants any more information on the material, we have all of that readily available. But the new price is 796. So again, because the budget only included 700,000, we're looking to do a one-time revenue out of four other options, one of which would be from other bonded funds, potentially from ARPA, from Capital Non-Recurring, or from the General Fund Fund Balance. And the recommendation from, it sounded like the other night on the Zoom from the Board of Finance that the Capital Non-Recurring would be the way to go, and our Finance Director has corroborated that. So is there any discussion on, does anybody have any ideas or want to talk about anything regarding where we should get this money to cover the difference?
Well, before we go that, the Municipal Billing Committee has recommended hiring this one firm at 796?
Yes.
Okay. I would, I would not take it out of the general fund. I would take it out of Capital Non-Recurring. There are funds in there that are available without changing our budget, and I don't think we should be hitting the general fund at all.
Okay. Is Harry on yet? Marsha, Jenny just said that he's going to be joining soon, so anyone amenable or not amenable to waiting for Harry, although we just laid all this out there?
No, I'm fine with waiting for Harry.
So the idea would be to get this approved tonight by the Board of Selectmen, and then hopefully, if the Board of Finance can get a special meeting in to resolve it before their eight June meeting, that would be ideal, so as to get the Whiskin Air walls moving along. Kids are going to be out of school this summer, and the work can start. The sooner we get our ducks in a row, the sooner, you know, the contractor can get going.
Do I make a motion that we table this until Harry joins?
He's, Harry, are you there?
He's on mute.
Yes, I am here.
Okay, Harry, you just missed the conversation about the Whiskin Air walls. That's the first item on our agenda for the evening. So we're looking for an additional $96,000 to cover the additional cost of the wall that wasn't included in the refer, in the budget at the $700,000 line item for the capital project, product. Money from ARPA, Capital Non-Recurring, from other bonded funds, or from the General Funds Fund Balance. And Steve and I tend to agree that we should get it from Capital Non-Recurring.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Do you have any questions or specific things you'd like to say about the Whiskin Air walls?
No, I, I know something that has to be attended to, and the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost, so I am ready to move forward.
Okay, great. That's kind of, I mean, that's exactly where I am, and I think Steve would agree. It's been long enough.
Yeah, just one question to the Director of Finance, Marsha, where, where within Capital Recurring would we have funding for this available?
Um, and I apologize, I'm, one of them was COVID, so I don't want to turn my screen on. But we would take it out of the, it's assigned fund balance, but it's not yet designated to a program. It's part of what we were saving for one-time revenues.
Okay, I'm fine. Okay, thank you.
And Harry, just to reiterate, the reason for the $96,000 increase was because of the materials being used.
Right.
It was originally supposed to come in at over a million, but they switched it from the steel product to something else, and it reduced the cost substantially, but not all the way down to the 700,000. So everybody good with that?
Yes, I am.
All right, well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the $96,000 additional appropriation from the Fund Balance and the Capital Non-Recurring Fund to be added to the Whiskin Air Middle School Wall Project and forward the request to the Board of Finance for their speedy approval.
I'll second that.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. The next item is for the Charter Revision Commission. Harry and Steve, were you in receipt of the emails regarding this?
Yes.
Yes.
You had a chance to review?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So we, we had brought it up, I had brought it up at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, and we needed to get it in before the 30 days. So tonight, we need to make a decision on who will be on that committee. I received recommendations from the RTC, the DTC, and others. Last time, five years ago, I guess, Steve, you would remember this, there were seven members appointed. Five years ago, it was three Republicans and four Democrats. We have options. It can be five to 15 members. I would, I would recommend that we stick with the seven that were appointed from five years ago. We could do it in any combination of ways. My recommendation would be to have three Republicans, two Democrats, and two unaffiliated.
That would make eight. Is that right?
How does that make eight? Three Republicans, two Democrats, and two unaffiliated?
Okay, sorry, sorry. I misunderstood you.
So do we want to make separate motions? Should I be making separate motions for every one of these items? Or just have a discussion over it and then group it all into one motion?
I, I think we could put it into one motion. Don't you, Steve, or?
Well, it depends on who you want to put in.
No, I meant, I meant as far as, do we need to make a motion on the number of candidates? And then, then go to, then go to, you know, who the candidates are going to be? That's what I meant.
Oh, you can make it a combined motion, but you could do it separately.
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend just making a motion with the individuals that you, you know, are setting forth, and then if it have discussion on it, and if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, it doesn't. And then they will have to discuss, you know, who does not want, who on the, decided against whatever specific appointment, and see if there's another round for a different motion. So, so it'd be one motion, naming seven people, and then it could be opened up for discussion.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, well, let's then start with Steve, who would you like to recommend from the RTC?
The RTC, I'm not making RTC nominations. I'll make them from the D side.
Okay. Ready when you are.
Oh, you want me to nominate? I would nominate Ray DeStefan, Howard Lasser, Crystal Ramos, and, no, and Christina, Christina Zimmerman, that's four. So you want to have three Rs, two Ds, and two Us?
Yes. Three, two, two.
As long as some of the, you have one U here, Ms. Sturdivant, who actively campaigned for the Republican Party in the last four elections. I don't consider her a U. She's clearly leans Republican, has voted for Republicans, has actively campaigned for Republicans. So I don't think she would be a fair unaffiliated. Linda Wagner would be great. I don't know, do you only have one unaffiliated here besides Linda?
Oh, actually, Rob is a mistake. That should be a Brookfield party.
Oh, right.
Yeah, that would be considered an unaffiliated party.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So Rob would be fine with me.
So just to clarify, who are your recommendations for you?
That'd be Ray DeStefan.
Yeah, I got, I got the Ds.
Right. For you, I would pick Rob Gianazzo and Linda Wagner. She's the local executive with the bank, lives in town, very involved in local activities, pays a lot of attention. Very nice person, very smart.
I, I know Linda well. I've, I've worked with her before in the past, and I would highly recommend her as well.
So, okay, I'd like, are you all set there, Steve?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to go next. And for the Ds, I would recommend Crystal Ramos and Christina Zimmerman. For the Us, I would pick Linda Wagner. And then Eve Sturdivant, and I would argue that she is a U because she is unaffiliated.
Legally unaffiliated, that's true.
And I do not know Rob Gianazzo. I've never met him. When you look at the bio briefs of these individuals, I mean, he has done great things for town. There's no denying that. But again, I've never met him, so I'm, I'm not comfortable putting forth a name for someone I don't, I've never met.
A couple of these people I haven't met. I would say, in looking at both Christina and Linda, both of them have, do not have actual experience on any town committees. Mr. Lasser, Mr. DeStefan Do, Mr. Lasser was on the Board of Selectmen. He knows the town charter inside and out. Ray DeStefan was a former chairman of the Board of Ed. He served for many years on the Board of Ed. I think we need experience on this board. If you pick Linda and Christina, you're getting two virtually new people, and you need some people who have done this before. And Howard Lasser has done this before, and he knows it inside and out. And Crystal, I like a lot. I know her. I don't know her real well, but she is a lawyer. She knows the law. She has practice in town, and I think she would make an excellent candidate.
So I'm sorry, who did you say were new to the, new to, new to this? Christina and who?
Linda. And I don't mind, we want to bring new people on. We do.
Right.
But to make the two Ds, people who have never served on a government board, doesn't seem like the right thing to do to me.
Oh, yeah? Well, I think that's interesting. I think new blood is good blood, and change is good, and people bring different perspectives, and I think it's time that, you know, we, we, you know, incorporate people who potentially have never done anything in government before. So for the Republicans, I would say Mr. Walker, Mr. Natenovic, and Ms. Hinger. Those are my three for the Rs.
Tara, I can, I'll give you mine. For the Republicans, I would go with Mr. Nivenovic, with Hinger, and with George. For the unaffiliates, I would go with Linda, and I would go with Rob. I have served many years with Rob on the Board of, Board of Education. I know he was on the Board of Finance, and I, I do, I understand that you don't know him, but I, I think he would serve the committee very well. And I do agree, as far as the Democrats, that I, my recommendation would be Crystal and Christina. So that would be my seven.
Okay, well, I stand firm with mine. Steve, any changes? Harry?
No.
So it seems that we're good with seven members, three Republicans, two Democrats, and two unaffiliated with the names that we mentioned, which would be Crystal, Christina, Linda, Rob, Car, uh, what's her first name? Leanna, Mario, and George.
I would be in agreement with that.
And for the record, I can state last names. It would be Crystal, Ramos, Christina, Zimmerman, Linda Wagner, Rob Gianazzo, Leanna Hinger, Mario Nasonovic, and George Walker. Any discussion? Hearing none?
I have, I have no discussion.
Okay, the next thing that we need to do before I make the motion would be to set the date that the town clerk would have to receive the draft report. So
So if I'm, if I can jump in, I don't mean, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry. So on this, I'll be working with the Charter Revision Commission pretty closely. They'll have access to me, my office, to try and work through any problems that they may have, whether they're new or older, point, people who have experience or not. So I think that obviously it'd be great to be able to get this on the November election. However, it might be a little bit tight to be able to do that, and I don't think the Commission should feel rushed in that sense. So as far as the timing is concerned, I think that you do need at least six months to go, to go through this. You know, again, you don't want the Commission to be just to feel as though they're rushed or kind of vetted what the, the Board is recommending. So, so that would be my, my recommendation, just in working with Charter Revision Commissions in the past. And you can keep in mind that if they do come back to you within six months, per the statute, the, the election, whether it be special or regular, has to be held within 15 months of when they came back to you. So you still may decide to do it in an, a regular election, but it just may have to be the following regular election, or it could be a special election, or also could be included when, in the town budget for next year. So it gives you some options if you do it that way. And then also, again, doesn't make the, the Commission feel as though they're rushed. But that was just something I wanted to advise the Board on, and if there's any questions, obviously, I'm here to answer them.
Dennis, I agree with you. I think that waiting, not putting on the November election is, is wise. I think that it would put pressure on the committee. So I would agree wholeheartedly with, with that, with you.
Yeah, I mean, perfect world, obviously, would be great to, to be able to do it then. But I think especially with the summer months, I worry about people's vacation schedules, and it's just something that just inevitably happens. So, so that's just my, my two cents on it.
Yeah, this, this, having seen it once before, it's an extremely arduous process. I don't think you can do it correctly in five and a half, six months. So I would say, yeah. Have, let's pick a, a date sometime next year, that they need to come back to us, and then you can decide whether we want to have it with the budget or in the November general election.
Another thing to consider would be the charge, and I don't know if anybody saw the email, or Harry or Steve, I sent it directly to you, if you've taken a look at some of the considerations. So Dennis, can you just clarify the way the charge works, please?
Yeah, so I mean, what's happening is the Board of Selectmen will make recommendations for the Commission to, to consider. It could be something as simple as referencing the charter sections, or what, you know, provisions of the charter that you would like to look at, and that the Subcommittee would, would have to then look at it. It does not need to obviously make it a change, but it would be forced to at least look into those specific issues. And then the Charter Revision Commission could obviously explore any other amendments or changes they think necessary in addition to what the Board of Selectmen recommends today.
So at what point does the charge need to be?
It should be done. I would, I would recommend doing it today because the Commission's going to be empowered, and, and they'll be empowered as of today. So it should be done today. And again, it does not have to be incredibly specific. I know there's some things that, that the First Select Woman has had in mind already. Obviously, there's some issues that the other two Board of Selectmen think should be looked at. They should, but I would recommend doing that today, just so the Commission from the beginning is, has their charge. And actually, I think by statute it's required, so I think that's what you have to do.
So there's no, there's no room for any kind of additions to the recommended charge from the Board of Selectmen, right?
There won't be. Yeah, there'll be a one-time recommendation. But again, the, the, the Commission is not at all restrained from looking at just any other items. They're, they're allowed to look at what is recommended today in addition to what they think needs to be revised.
So I'd like to review that charge. There were six items on it for public record, because I think the charge really plays into the timeline, right? The first one to consider would be creating an actual pension board. And the second would be to change the vacancy section so that a vacancy on a board must be filled by the same political party rather than allow for the board to change an R to a D or vice versa. The third consideration is to change the town clerk from elected, elected to appointed. The fourth would be to merge the Planning and the Zoning Commission into one commission. The fifth is to look at the budget process to see if it can be streamlined. And the sixth is to create an alternate position for the Board of Assessment Appeals, especially during, or for revaluation years. Nothing further. And I don't have in front of me the exact date that I emailed that to you, gentlemen, but.
Selectman Shaker, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry about that, guys. I pushed it off because I'm in a public place. Not a public place, but I mean, it's a little noise. Yes, I was saying that I don't have anything that I would add to that charge.
I don't have anything to add either.
So if we, if we looked at doing a year from now, it would be with the referendum. And in my opinion, that would be substantial time to get it done.
Well, remember, you have to have time to review it, discussion, meetings of the Board of Selectmen. So you, you'd have to be like January or February.
So, yeah, so it's actually forty. So what'll happen is when the Board receives the recommendations, they have 45 days to then hold a public hearing, and then, you know, set, set the date. But that date can be within 15 months of when the Board of Selectmen decides to, to set the referendum date on. So if, if the goal is to try and at least hold an option for the Charter Revision suggestions to be on the, the budget, in or around early May, then you're going to have to think 45, at least 45 days before that timeframe is when I would have the report back, to be the outside date for the report back. So I mean, you're, you're talking
March.
Early March, March, yeah. March 1st would be the outside date. And then if it's, if it's in the Board of Selectmen's hand on March 1st, then there's 45 days for discussions. And then at that point, the Board of Selectmen can decide to put those Charter Revision questions on for May, whatever, whatever date in May it is, the first Tuesday.
Yeah, can the Board of Selectmen, if the Charter Revision Committee comes to us, let's say in November, and say, listen, we're not going to get done by March 1st, can we have additional time? Can the Board of Selectmen change that?
Unfortunately, no, no, the statute has this, it's, it's a really rigid timeframe. If anything, you talk about Charter Revision, the statute may be looked at again, too, it's to give municipalities a little bit more time, flexibility to get this done, but unfortunately, no.
Yeah, that's pretty tight. We, but if we set a date, let's say June 1st of next year, and they got to us by March 1st, we could then send the 45 days.
Absolutely.
With the budget.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
It's better to have it later rather than earlier.
Yeah, the only issue, yeah, you're just going to foreclose the option of doing it with the budget if you do that, because technically, the, the Commission may be taking time, and they may not get to it until June 1st. So, so that's, that's kind of the, the decision.
But if they did come back to us end of February, we could set it and still have it with the budget.
Absolutely.
Right.
Is there any advantage to having it with the, with the budget or disadvantage?
More voters.
Have it as a standalone?
Yeah, more people get interested.
More people vote. You won't probably get as many people coming out to vote on a separate referendum for Charter Revision changes. So you'll get a better cross-section of the public, of the residents, if you hold it during a budget or a November election. Which way it would go, I don't, I have no idea.
I just don't want to
I would say, ask them to come back to us in a year, June 1st, and then if they come back earlier, we can always have it, we have the option to do it with the budget, or we have the option of doing it with the election, or we could do it separately. Gives us more options.
If they don't come back to us earlier, then we're stuck with the fall election. So could we bring it forward?
Necessarily. You could hold it, you could hold a separate referendum.
But then that costs money.
Yeah, that's true. That'd cost us $6,000 to $10,000.
I mean, you're talking a difference of between nine, nine months or 12 months. I mean, that, that's what the debate, I mean, because it's the end of February, basically, if they start doing their work, technically, June 1st, they've got nine months versus a year. So that's, that's really what's up for debate.
So what would the date in February be? February?
That's a good question. No.
My, my vote would be to go with earlier.
So February 2023, the last day in February is February 28th.
Thank you.
I would want to give them more time.
How do you feel about it, Harry?
I, I'm not really hung up either way. I, I, I'm not hung up either way. I, I, I I, 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 I would think that the charges that they're being given, I think that they'll be able to uh, get through these without a lot of, um, you know, a lot of problems or issues. So I, you know, I, it, it really, not that it doesn't matter to me, I, I would be, I would be happy with either date. I, it's, I'm not really hung up on either one.
Yeah, if it, if it matters at all, I just want to read it, that I'll be working with the commission pretty closely. Um, you know, my office has done charter revisions and other municipalities as well. So, um, I think having, uh, you know, access, readily available access may make things a little bit easier for them. Um, so I think nine months would be okay. I think I, I would, because I'm working with them, if it was something that was, that I thought was unattainable, I would say it just to, just so we delivered on what, you know, what I need to do with, with them and, and help the commission. But I think nine months is acceptable. Um, you know, it's not something that bothers me either, not that I have a vote, but I'm just saying it because I have, I have to work with the commission. So when we report back is, is important to me because I have to know my parameters of, of helping them.
And if we look at other, at our, other committees that have been established to do hard work, um, the ARPA committee stands out as, as an, as an example of how they were able to get, um, just great work done in a very short amount of time. So sounds like we're going to go with the nine-month goal. Am I hearing that correctly?
You need to make a motion and vote on it.
Yeah, I think.
I want to include that in the motion, so.
Yes, I'm, I'm fine with the, I.
Has there, has there been a motion for the appointment? So there should be a, a motion for the appointment of the individuals, uh, that, uh, when votes on, then there should be a motion for the charge. And I think the motion for the report back would, would make sense.
Okay, so that's what I was asking about earlier. So, all right, I'll make three separate motions. Since I have them all here, um, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint three Republicans, two Democrats, one unaffiliated. As per our discussion, and those individuals include Christina Zimmerman, Crystal Rom- Crystal Ramos, Linda Wagner, Rob Gianaza, Leanna Hanger, Mario Nasenovic, and George Walker to the Charter Revision Commission for twenty twenty-two. Can I get a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries two to one. And the next motion would be to set the charge. Should I reread these?
No, you don't need to do that.
So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, Steve. Do you want to do that?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I make a motion that we, um, charge the Charter Revision Committee with the six items that were, uh, named by the first selectwoman. On pension board, vacancies on boards, town clerk, budget changes. I'm sorry, what were the other two? I didn't.
Merging planning and zoning.
Right.
Uh, streamlining the budget process.
Right.
And creating an alternate position for the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Yeah, I would make that motion.
I would second that.
So the motion would be to submit the charges written by the first selectwoman.
Right.
And again, I would second that.
Discussion?
None.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the final motion, be it resolved that the selectmen establish the twenty twenty-two Charter Revision Commission to review the town charter and make recommendations for changes there to promote improvements to and efficiencies in government in the town of Brookfield in accordance with general statute, section seven dash one-nine Bravo and seven dash one-nine Bravo. The Charter Revision Commission sells, shall submit a draft report to the town clerk honor before twenty-eight February twenty twenty-three, which has been determined by the Board of Selectmen.
I would second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that a nay, Steve?
I'm a nay.
Motion passes two to one. Okay, I think we've got the Charter Revision Commission solidified. There need to be another motion to get them started officially tonight?
No, we just, we've, the commission was, no, commission, commission was created, it was appointed, recommendations done and report back. So uh, it, it's fine. And then the commission should, uh, set its first meeting. Um, you know, you, you, you might want to assist with that because then at that point they can, they can uh, elect the chair and that chair can then run the meetings going forward.
Thank you. Anything else on charter revision before we move on?
None.
Not for me.
Item six on the agenda for this evening regarding our loitering ordinance and a few hours ago, I believe I sent you a, um, updated version of the draft with some recommendations that I've attained from across town hall. Looks like this. Harry and Steve, with the highlights in yellow. Um, we received three recommendations so far. One from the HR director, one from the Public Works Director, and one from the Public Health Director. And, um, the reason for this ordinance is because there is no lord, lord, loitering ordinance that exists in town. And we've had um, some occasions where, um, there's been, there've been people, um, hanging around. That's a colloquial expression, but, um, lingering in town hall and buildings across town, um, to include the library and, and other places. Um, so it's come to my attention that, um, the town, uh, could use this, this ordinance. Have you, Harry and Steve, had a chance to read through it?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I am fine with it.
I still have some questions on it, but we can have a hear, we're, we're going to have a hearing that everybody can, um, be heard. But I think in general, it's a good idea.
I was actually going to recommend that we move the hearing until July to give us, uh, some time to continue to work the draft. I think the June meeting would be too soon um, to have the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too.
All right, so.
And if, if I may too, I wanted to just also, uh, if any of the board of selectmen or anything have any issues with the loitering, uh, policy, obviously there's a draft that started with our office that was a, can be circulated. We're taking recommendations by everybody. So if the, if anybody in the meantime has some questions on it, please reach out. Uh, it's better to reach out in advance of the public hearing so I can make revisions and, and so the public has more of a final version from us. So uh, just making that offer. So if anybody has any recommendations, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you. All right. So I'd like to make a motion that the selectmen schedule a public hearing on Monday, July fifth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM in meeting room one thirty-three.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
None.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the next item, um, relates to the Affordable Housing Plan. We've been briefed on. Um, and Ginny Reece sent this on the twentieth of May, but, um, Greg Dombowski presented it on April fourth at a board of selectmen meeting. Um, it was also attached in that, um, meeting, in that packet of that meeting. But, um, this has been out there being worked for, for quite some time now. And, um, it, it all revolves around this, this regional plan that the Cog has in order to address affordable housing. Um, Brookfield was one of eight towns that will actually be part of the Cog's annex. Um, um, the other towns across the Cog approximately, I think, ten other towns, they hired consultants to go out and, and draft this, but, um, it was done in-house. Thank you, Mr. Dombowski and others who contributed. Um, the other people who weighed in were, um, the zoning commission, the EDC, planning, Brookfield Housing Authority, social services, and, uh, the board of selectmen, obviously. Am I missing anybody there, Greg?
Oh, you got them.
Um, and then there was the public hearing that was held with the planning commission and they voted unanimously to approve it on May nineteenth. So it's our turn tonight and I'd like, does anybody have any questions on anything that I just said?
I don't.
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that the selectmen approve the adoption Brookfield Affordable Housing Plan to be effective on one June twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No.
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Greg, did you have anything that you wanted to say on it?
No, thank you very much. We're required by state statute to have this on record on June first. So we've met the deadline. Thank you very much. And we will make the appropriate recordings and filings. And we are all done on this one for now. Now the real work starts. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And moving on to the Health Director, um, I put this on there because it's time to have a conversation about the way we want to move Brookfield forward. And, and I say that because, um, it's with sadness that Doc, uh, Dr. Sullivan has announced his retirement and, uh, he's made it known that he'll be um, leaving us in September for his retirement. Um, so from what I understand, Connecticut has been pushing this idea of regionalization. And over the past months, um, Marcia and Fern and myself have been, um, doing some, some work and some, and some, uh, meetings with some of the health districts that are out there to determine the way ahead and start to, um, get a better idea of, of what's actually happening in our neighborhood, so to speak. Um, there's two options for us at, uh, with health districting, from, from what I understand now. Um, but the question is to district or to not district. Um, so that's something I really wanted to kind of throw out there for you guys. Um, start thinking about this. And there's pros and cons to everything in life, as we all know. And I can speak to some of the things that, um, we've been looking at, uh, if, if you'd like to hear that tonight.
Sure, give us a quick review.
Yeah, so, so to keep it local or to not district. So, um, there are some challenges. Um, there's kind of a lot of things going on there. And Steve, you probably remember this, but there's a shortage of skill sets across the state. Um, so for example, with Lisa used a departure as our sanitarian, one of our sanitarians, she, um, we're having a really hard time filling that position. And the only way to attract the talent would be to increase the salary because we're coming in at the very low end of what she was being paid, which is why she left. Um, so that's, that's one of the issues there. Um, it becomes, it becomes more about finding the, the right person with the right skills at the right time. Um, so for example, when Doc leaves in the fall, we, there's a new requirement where that, that person, if he were to be replaced, is to have a MPH, a Masters of Public Health. So there's another challenge. It's an added layer. Um, and we would have to, again, be very careful as to where we're coming in salary-wise because the job market is ripe.
It's also required that it be a full-time position versus Doc's current part-time.
That is correct. And that is actually the direction that if we do decide to keep it local, that's, that's what I would recommend anyway. I think it's necessary. I think, um, through the challenges that the town of Brookfield experienced through COVID, um, with Doc's part-time status, he has definitely worked way more than part-time and has contributed so much through the pandemic. Um, and there's just a lot of other facets of, of public health, health and safety that have come up, especially in light of the pandemic, that it's going to be important to have a full-time, um, Director of Public Health for the town of Brookfield if we decide to keep it local.
I agree because Doc has literally been working full-time for the last two years.
He is, he is a force and we're, we're going to be hard pressed to find somebody, um, of his caliber. So one option, again, keeping it local, um, one option might be to if we're, when we, if we have to take, when we take on this full-time director, um, then potentially make the part-time, the sanitarian Lisa's posit- Lisa used former physician, um, part-time. Especially if that full-time director comes equipped and armed with the right skills. For example, Doc has all the, um, certifications to be able to go out and do inspections and do the things that keep the town ticking, right? So, um, it, it all just depends, again, on the right person at the right time with the right skills. Um, so switching over to going regional, um, we've spoken both with Newtown and the Houstonic Valley's Director. Um, Marcia has done some pretty in-depth cost analysis i- in joining a district. Um, but it's more than just cost and there's multiple variables that should be considered just beyond any cost savings. And even going out to a district doesn't necessarily mean that there will be savings associated. It all just depends on how we do it and what we do and where we go. Um, so, so i- it's not essentially about any cost savings necessarily. It should be about what's best for our residents and what they want, which leads me to my final point. Um, I would, I would say that we should take it to a town vote.
That's a thought. The concern I have with the health district, I know that, uh, prior to my administration, there was discussions adjoining Danbury. Um, and you would pay so much per capita for Danbury to be our health district, as it were. The thing I am concerned about, and I think a lot of residents would be, is how much of our resources would actually get directed to a town other than Danbury? Not that they're not nice people and don't do a good job, but it's just human nature. I'm going to take care of my local first before I take care of, um, any outline areas. So that's a concern for me. Um, the cost overall, uh, I haven't seen the final numbers and I'd like to see those is secondary to doing it right. Um, it's going to cost us more money. There's no doubt about it. What we're paying Doc will not begin to cover what a new person would be, nor what a health district would be. So it's going to cost more, so we should do it right, really analyze it and make sure if we do go to a health district, that we get written confirmed, uh, levels of support that we can expect. You know, we will respond within so many days for this sort of thing. We will get back to you within this amount of time. Because the last thing we want is sitting, sitting out there for two or three weeks when we're looking for an inspection or something needs to be done.
Yeah, Steve, Steve, or Tara, um, do we know of, or would we have access to any uh, surrounding towns or towns that we know of that are now involved in, in regional health and how they like it? If they, is their money being well-spent? Um, just so we have some kind of barometer as to, you know, what people, people think of regional healthcare?
Yeah, I've spoken with, um, Dan Rosenthal on the Newtown side and his Health Director. I've spoken with Pete Bass and New Milford. They recently took it to town vote and joined the Houstonic Valley with their Health Director, Lisa Morrissey, who's now working for the, the Houstonic Valley um, district. Um, uh, you know, I've spoken with other first selectmen who've joined, um, these health districts and there's, again, there's, every town is different and unique in its own way. So, you know,
Right.
Doing a lot of listening, but, um, again, I, I want what's best for Brookfield and it's hard to compare sometimes, um, based on different needs.
Yeah, it's almost impossible to compare. It's not really apples to apples. I know Lisa is very, very good, though.
She is good, but I will say that that, that district has become very large. I forget what, how many towns they're up to now.
No.
Five or six. And, uh, from what I understand, it's been in the paper as well, that some towns are considering pulling out. So I don't know exactly what's happening. Um, but there's a lot of factors to consider. Newtown is much smaller. Um, I think they've got Washington, Roxbury, and Newtown, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I don't think we want to get into one that's too big because you get lost in the crowd.
But again, Brookfield is much different than those three towns I just mentioned. We've got the Federal Road Corridor. We have a lot of food establishments and, and places that really need, you know, that attention. Um,
Yeah, we have a lot more requirements than a Roxbury or Washington. We just do. Because of the, you know, the structure of the town.
So anyway, I just wanted to throw all that out of, out there for tonight so that we can really start to think about this. And please consider um, any, any conversation. I'm totally open to. And, uh, again, I, I want this to be what's right for Brookfield, so. again, I, I want this to be what's right for Brookfield, so.
Yeah, I, I, I would just like to say that if Newtown is happy with the service and they're happy with how their money is being spent, I would think they would be comparable, if not a, a larger, have a larger concern than us as far as need. And not just to save money, but I, I would kind of like to know how much more it would be if we had our, our, our own, you know, did it individually. But you know, I'm not, I'm certainly not against going, going to a, a regional if we can, like, like I say, if there are towns our size or with our needs that are, that are happy with their group.
So just for peace of mind, there's, there's certain facets of what the Department of Public Health does that will be lost, not lost, but that will be transferred, right? So, for example, somebody wants to come in and grab their booster, I'm using that because it's a current example. They would have to, you know, drive over to Newtown. Not that that's a big deal, but it might be to Brookfield residents who are taxpayers here, you know.
Well, that's exactly the sort of thing you'd say, you negotiate with Newtown and say, okay, if they're boosters, you'll give us four days, some will be at Brookfield Town Hall.
Yeah, sure, those kinds of things can be worked out. I was just using it as an example.
Right, right.
There may be certain times where our residents have to drive to get services.
Yeah. That's a big negative for it.
All right, does anybody else have any other ideas on that?
Not, not, not at this time, no.
Okay.
No, I don't.
All right, so conversation to be continued. It is time for public comment. Is there anybody from the public this evening that wants to say anything?
Tara, I would like to just say again to the group, I apologize about being a little late. I am in Fort Worth, and we're an hour behind, and that kind of snuck up on me, so I do apologize for coming in a few minutes late.
Thank you. Okay, well, for those of you who, I, I actually, I would like to just say that with recent developments in Texas and the tragedy of yesterday, you know, it's just unspeakable, and I'm at a loss, so I know the rest of Brookfield feels the same way. And with that, unless anybody has anything else, Harry or Steve?
I'm fine. I'm all set.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion, hearing? None?
Aye.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too. Bye-bye.